So, hey, everybody. It's Chamber Matt and today I am conducting interviews with the school district candidates from the third district. I have with us here first Brian and Brian, can you tell me first off, what this, this isn't one of your official questions, so you don't have to worry about screwing this one up. What's the third district? You represent the third district. What territory is that?
That is Long Lake Olalla, basically.
Okay, so it's the Long Lake Olalla area, but I think it's kind of crazy. So people in Kitsap county, in South Kitsap School District, doesn't matter where they live, they're gonna vote for a candidate in District Three, right?
Correct, correct. They will vote for all candidates, all positions, and that's true in the primary as well as in the general election.
Okay, so, so just because they don't live in Olalla, they, they still get to vote and it's important for them to be-
I'm gonna live in downtown Port Orchard, Manchester, Burley, Sun Slope, they're, they can vote for me, not so-
Alright, they can vote for you, so-
They can vote for me, that's alright.
So I guess, everybody, it's Chamber Matt and I am with Anna Schroeder this morning. She is running for the South Kitsap School District position or District Number Three, which as Brian explained is kind of the Long Lake Olalla area. A pretty big geographical area out there and Anna, thank you for joining me this morning and, and giving us an opportunity just to, to see a picture other than the one that, that shows up in the, in the voter pamphlet, so. So, we're, we're putting a name to a face here and I got a few questions for you and so, you know, we'll just go ahead and jump in, talk about a few of the questions and then kind of bounce back and forth between you and Brian, so if you don't mind, we'll go ahead and start.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Outstanding. So the first question is, is I always say is the hardest, in that it's, tell us about yourself and why do you think you're qualified to be a South Kitsap School District Board Member?
Alright, well, I grew up in Port Orchard. My parents moved here. I think I was born in Bramerton, we lived there for a little bit, but then I've been in Port Orchard ever since I was a toddler. My husband grew up in Port Orchard, we met in high school, so we're high school sweethearts, which everybody thinks is super adorable. And then we bounced around, went to college over at Eastern Washington University, we got married, we've lived in Puyallup and back here in a couple of different places, but we decided when we were like, okay, we've got a family started, we're gonna settle down, we decided to come back home and be next to our family and have our kids go to the schools here and be back where we grew up. My husband is a teacher in the South Kitsap School District, he teaches at John Sedgwick. So, that is good to be in the community where our kids are going to school and where he's working. Right now, I work down in Tacoma at St. Joseph Medical Center, I'm a ICU nurse there and I mostly focus on neuro trauma and stroke. I've been there for five years. Nursing was a career change for me. Before that, I had a Bachelor's of Music Theory and Music Performance, which is still my passion, but it doesn't pay the bills as well as I like. So I decided to go back into nursing and discovered that nursing is something I love and so I'm so happy I made that choice, which allows me also to give back to my community and to help not only the sickest people in the ICU, but the community at large as I help other people heal and get them back on their feet and back out into their lives. I wanted to run for school board because the last couple of years, even before the pandemic totally derailed everything, I was dissatisfied with the decisions that were being made and the attitude that was prevalent in, in the district and in the school board and how contentious the relationship between the school board and the teachers and the non-certified staff and everybody, it just, it wasn't helping anything and I love where I live, I think it's fantastic and long time, South Kitsap people will know this attitude of, well, it's just South Kitsap, it's good enough for us, we're not as fancy as Gig Harbor, we don't have the money of North Kitsap and there's no reason to be that way. Like, we have a fantastic place to live, we have so many natural resources and parks and community, there's no reason why we have to say, oh, well, it's good enough for us. So, I want to make our school district someplace where teachers say, oh, you got a job at South Kitsap, you went there, oh, I had such a great time there, I wanna go work there. They have great pay, benefits, schools, the teachers are supported by the community and the school board, we have all these excellent programs. I want it to be a place where people want to bring their kids and where we have teachers who want to come here because when we're teaching our kids, we're building our own community. We don't have to say, well, it's good enough because for me, it's not good enough for my kids. I want my kids to have the very best and I don't wanna have to send them out to other places. I want them to be here at home with their family, with the people that love and support them. So, in my job as a nurse, I do a lot of systems management. I'm obviously taking care of the patient. A human is a system, there's cardiac system, respiratory system, that sort of thing, and my job is to make it all work. I also do people systems, different doctors, different teams, sometimes with conflicting goals or things that disagree with each other, especially when my teams don't wanna talk to each other very well, so I do a lot of conflict resolution, I do a lot of management and overseeing of the care of the patient, so the patient gets the best care possible and has the best outcomes. Sometimes that outcome is healing and leaving the hospital and sometimes that outcome is palliative and moving towards hospice, but that entire sphere of physical, mental, emotional health, that's my job as the nurse, is to manage that. That sort of understanding of there are different goals that need to work together and sometimes the goal that I want and I think we should have is not the goal that the patient wants, so I need to listen and be receptive and compassionate. I'm gonna bring that to the school board, where I can say, these are all of our differing opinions, these are the different systems we're dealing with, whether it's a physical system, infrastructure, schools, whether it's buses, lunches, teachers and unions, all that sort of stuff, it all has to mesh together and be for the benefit of our students. I'm also very good at being efficient. These four-hour school board meetings, no, that's not gonna happen. I got young kids, I got a job, I ain't got time for that, so we need to get our stuff done, we need to do our research, we need to discuss and we need to make a decision.
So I guess the first question that I have for you, Brian, is tell me a little bit about yourself, or I guess really as much as you wanna take, but we do have a time limit here. And what makes you think that you are the most qualified person to, to run for the board?
I believe I'm the most qualified because of my experience in public education. I've spent thirty-eight years in, in K-12 public education. I've been in a variety of leadership roles, I was a elementary principal for twenty-seven years, district office level administrator for three years, classroom teacher for eight, I did that out of order, but I was a classroom teacher first and then worked my way, my way up with, with that. I've also served on a wide variety of different types of boards that in, in both as a membership as well as leadership. In, in those roles, everything from, I'm currently on the South Kitsap Helpline, the Food Bank Board, past president. I've been on that board for eight years and provided leadership there. I was, when I was, before I retired in two thousand and eighteen, I was on the Elementary School State Principals Association and served all the, the different chairs, different roles in that, president, past president, treasurer. I was also through that time, both before and after as well and during, I was the Federal Relations Liaison, which, which meant that I connected with members, Washington state members of, of the Congress and went and talked to them and lobbied them for public education, elementary schools in particular and the students in the entire, for the entire state of Washington. I'm also currently on the Point Hope Board, which is a global board and it's, the, the focus there is on forgotten children as the, as the motto says in there and that's healthcare needs, nutrition and, and a particular focus in the United States is within the foster care system. Anyway, I'm getting a little bit more into the weeds of, of, of some of that. Basically, my entire career, my entire adult life has been focused on youth. Working with kids, working with people or working with kids and those types of things and the, that's where my passion is, that's where my love is. I've done the work, you know, I roll up my sleeves, I'm a doer, I'm not a watcher. I lead by example. I provided a variety of leadership by connecting with people, building relationships, being trustworthy, that's why I'm the best candidate for this position.
So, alright, now, next question, getting, digging in a little bit deeper into things. Infrastructure is critical to the growth and development of a community. And how would you best handle the growing infrastructure needs of the school district, you know, given the increased population?
So, when I was in elementary school at Orchard Heights, we were the largest population elementary school. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, we were at five hundred kids or six hundred kids or something outrageous and that was twenty years? No, sorry, I'm thirty-five, I can't do math, twenty-five years ago? And we were having this exact same conversation is, wow, how are we gonna fit all these kids in? Now we're starting to use computers and how are we gonna fit these computer labs in the school? They take up so much space. Obviously, technology has advanced and now our computers are much smaller, but we're still having the exact same questions of how are we gonna fit these kids in? How are we gonna get the supplies and the infrastructure to use the supplies into the buildings? So, this is a common problem and what I think needs to happen before, oh, sorry, my phone is buzzing and I will tell them I can't talk right now, there we go. They, what we need to do is we need to look at our district and we need to make a priority list of what needs to happen. I know a new high school is like the banner project that we wanna do because we definitely need to update our high school. I actually did a project on the history of our high school way back when I was in high school and it's really old, so we need to look at that obviously, but we've seen already by multiple failed bond votes that the community is not going to support that, not with enough support to make it really a functional and efficient process. And I don't wanna drag people kicking and screaming into these improvement projects because then there's opposition and resentment and we're not all working towards a common goal, like, that's my job to do. So, we need to make a list of the easiest and cheapest improvement projects that we can have. We need to line, make it a line item thing, look at it from every angle, make it as efficient and cost-effective as possible and then start small, do small projects. How can we get the most benefit for our dollars, which are our community's dollars, to our students immediately so that we can see the rewards for that? Once we do that a couple of times and we have an idea of what we can retrofit, what we need to build new, what systems we can add on to and which ones are outdated, then we can start doing the bigger projects of maybe we need to build a new elementary school, maybe we need an eleventh elementary school, maybe we need to adjust where these students are going and change the district lines. Then we can say, okay, let's look at the big projects. We've proven that we can do things cost-effective and efficiently. We've proven that we can be trusted with the taxpayer dollars and we've proven that what we're doing is gonna benefit our students.
Thanks, Anna, that was, that was a great answer and-
Alright, so, the, the next question that Brian is, you know, infrastructure is critical to the growth and development of a community. Now, how, how would you best handle the growing infrastructure needs of the South Kitsap School District as our increase, our population goes up?
Great question and anticipated question. It's, that's a huge, huge issue. We are, we're behind, significantly behind in what we should be doing. There's a, there's a current facilities review committee that's going on. I think it's, it's critical that we listen to their thoughts, their process and trust them with that and, and see what their recommendations are and take, take that in. Our, and again, this is pretty wildly widely known, but our newest schools are thirty years old and that's, that's about a lifetime for most schools. Now, obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna need to and we will continue to, to utilize them, update and take care of those facilities. We have to. But we also have to look at significant remodel of, if it calls for it, if the recommendations are there and it makes the most sense, remodels of, of several different buildings. I strongly believe we need a second high school or something like that. It could be something, you know, like a, a learning center that would maybe take the pressure as far as numbers of kids and whatnot off of different schools at the middle, middle level, high school level, that type of thing. I, I, you know, I don't know, those are just sort of my thoughts. But again, we need to take a look at what are those needs and we talk to the experts, which are the people that are working in the schools, we talk to the community and really before all of that, well, or maybe alongside all of that, is that the board needs to develop and connect with the community. The, the, the level of trust out there is pretty low. In talking with people in different groups that I've spoken to around the community, just shopping at stores, running into people and things like that, people aren't, not sure about the board, they're not, and therefore not sure about the district and so there's, there's gotta be a huge connection and building of trust and relationships which then builds trust and things. So, those are the things that need to be in, in place. Now, you know, I, I could say and give you my opinions as far as, okay, we need the second high school, we need to replace South Colby, we need to replace Cedar Heights and those types of things. Maybe, maybe not. Maybe there's some other ways in which to go about that, maybe there's some consolidation. But with all the different building that's going on, just take a quick drive around the area and you can see that. And what people also don't see is the approved housing starts or apartment starts that aren't even up yet, they haven't even broken ground off. We have to take all of that information and plan the very best. People, I was gonna say, people are, are gonna be coming, they're not going to be, they're already here. Now, right now, I think a lot, from what I've heard, a lot of those are older families that are moving, kids are maybe just finishing up school or, or have already gone, but the, the younger families are here, are coming and our school are full. We have to act ten years ago, we have to act right now and make, make a definite plan collectively, but also building respect, building trust in that process so we can get things done, so we can pass some, some bonds.
Alright, outstanding, great answer. And now, this is kind of a two-part question, but the, the first part of the question is, you know, right now, what do you think are some of the biggest opportunities that a South Kitsap School District has and why?
I think we need to recognize the skill and the training that our current teachers have because we are getting a lot of influx of new teachers because a lot of our teachers are approaching retirement and aging out of the system, which is fantastic. They've served their time, they've seen the district through a lot of changes, they have all of this knowledge they have to impart in this experience that they have. And then we have this new teachers coming in that are fresh out of university, they have new ideas, they might have been in another district, they might have not, they're coming in here and they're ready to participate and help build it. So we need to recognize that our teachers are highly trained, they're highly skilled and a lot of them have a lot of experience and I know there's a social perception of teachers. I know that they have not been valued as they should have been. Obviously, I'm married to one, I value him highly, so I have a, a personal opinion about this, but I feel like that is changing for the better and I think we need to recognize that and be on par with other districts and other communities that are recognizing the vital role that these teachers play. Obviously, this has been highlighted during the pandemic when suddenly we didn't have the schools, we didn't have school lunches, transportation, sports, buses, clubs, all these things that happen that our students and our families rely on, school nurses. That's something that a lot of students get their medical interaction through the nurse who's gonna say, hey, I noticed this problem, you should go see your doctor, we should refer you to a doctor, let's find you the resources you need. Same thing with teachers and learning disabilities, teachers with maybe socio-economic problems at home, a lot of times they're the first people to see that. So, we need to recognize that value that they have and go to them and say, what are your ideas? What tools do you need? That opportunity we have, I think we need to get away from the top-down approach where we say, oh, the school district says these are the rules, the administration enforces these rules and the teachers just need to follow and do what they're supposed to do. There is an element that has to be there, there has to be some structure, there has to be somebody in charge, I totally understand that. But then we need to listen to our teachers who say, we're doing this thing, it's not working, or we're doing this other thing, it's amazing, let's expand it, let's do that. We see gaps and we say, hey, maybe we feel like there's too much time spent on this one subject or we can't feel like we don't get enough of this done. We don't have enough teacher, not teacher, sorry, enough parent support, I'm feeling like I'm dragging the parents along, we need more community involvement. How can we make that happen? And I, that, that knowledge base that we have, we can't discount that. So, other opportunities that we have aside from the fact that our schools could use an upgrade and I think just having new schools, new equipment, having more techno- technological resources in the hands of our students, we can create these hybrid classrooms that they're just so much more immersive. I know my kids, I have them, got them little tablets, I went against my better mom judgment and I got them some tablets, they go on and they read and they watch videos about all sorts of stuff, so also letting the students have the freedom to say, oh, this is what we're interested in, this is what we've seen, let's, let's talk about this, let's get a little more immersive and let the teachers have that flexibility to let the students' interest and excitement kind of drive them. Obviously, they still need reading, writing, arithmetic, I mean, that's the basis of all understanding. I have been really impressed with the wit and wisdom that my students have been, my students, my children have been doing because they do look at it from that more broad perspective of, let's talk about poetry, let's talk about history, let's read these books and draw pictures about it and I really like that. I think that's the kind of idea we need to have, that we're covering not just steam, not just, you know, English, but also let's do arts, let's do sports, let's learn about different cultures, all that stuff that we have. We have the opportunity there and I think we need to seize it. The other opportunity that the school board really needs to do is to develop a good working relationship with the community. Right now, things are very divisive, the pandemic and the recession before that and things have really shoved people- But the, the school board, is that kind of a low ebb right now and I don't feel that they're doing a good job. Most everybody I talk to says they're not doing a good job and they either side with one person or one view or just say, a whole lot of them was total bunk. So, there's an opportunity there for the school board to say, okay, we're gonna start fresh, we're gonna come at this with new eyes, we're gonna come at this with good, open attitudes, we're here to listen, listen to these sides. The community is very divided on a number of things right now and it's not just masks, no masks, though you should wear a mask. It's not just, do we be in school, out of school, high taxes, low taxes, I mean, there's, there's lots of facets to this problem. And if we, as a school board, say, okay, we're here as public servants, our job is to listen to the community, to distill what your values and needs are and then to say, how can we move forward so that we're supporting your children and your families? That is something that the new school board that's gonna be formed after this election really needs to focus on and needs to grasp. More than the capital improvements, more than anything is, we need to get down to the very, very basic needs of our community, recognize what they need and what support they need and how we can work together because I can't force people to get along, but I can get them to work together and that's what needs to happen. We need to find the common ground.
So, the, the next part of the question, this next question is a two-parter. I'm gonna ask you the first one and then you're probably gonna assume what the second one is, but first question, what do you think are some of the biggest opportunities for the South Kitsap School District right now?
Not obstacles, but opportunities.
Opportunities, because you know what's coming next, right?
Our, our biggest opportunities are, again, our diversity of program and what we offer kids. There's, there's a wide variety of, of, of things that, that kids can be involved in at the elementary, middle school and particularly the high school. Anybody that hasn't seen all the different course offerings, the opportunities for kids, again, particularly at that high school level, you need to go do that, make an appointment, go see what's, what's going on. I, I have, I have a son that's teaching video production and that's, that's a CTE CTE program that, as we used to know, we used to be vocab, but but, you know, and he talks about the different things that kids have and again, it's in, in athletic med, it's, it's in, in higher level mathematics and sciences. I mean, there is so much, that's, that's a positive side about being large with the high school. There's so much there and so many opportunities for kids to do. I was, I broadcast the, the Friday night football or helped with that broadcast and, you know, one of the, you know, everybody knows the struggles that the football team is, is having right now and, and all that. And, you know, I've been told this, there are so many activities, it's, the, the kids are somewhat spread thin and all the different things they can't do at all, they realize that. And so, it's nice to have that diversity, it's nice to have those different programs, academic activities, the, the whole gamut. And, and, you know, we live in an incredible place where we can learn both in and outside of the classroom, the kids can, we can, interact and I really believe that, that the community is, is ripe to be that much more involved with our schools. So, those, those are just some of the opportunities that I see of being right here in South Kitsap and good old Port Orchard.
So, so, Anna, when you, when you went through the, the opportunities, you, you had an optimistic view of things and considering that, that's some of the you know, some of the challenges are opportunities also and I agree with that. But the next, the next question is, and, and you may repeat yourself a little bit, but, you know, what do you think are some of the biggest challenges facing the school district and, you know, how do you think you can help face those challenges?
I think one of the big challenges with the division that's in our community is that we as a whole, as a community, have allowed ourselves to brick ourselves off into different points of view. We have, and then we have taken those different points of view and we've used that as leverage for dividing our families and our community. Meaning that if I believe this one way, then I refuse to see what your point of view is. I don't wanna listen to what you have to say and this is from both sides. I am a nurse, I'm a mask proponent, I'm a vaccine proponent when it is available for your age group, but I recognize that people might not understand or might not feel comfortable with that. My job as a nurse is to educate. I educate my patients, I educate my patients' families, I say, this is what's happening, this is the science, but I cannot force them to do anything. I cannot make them take a medication, I cannot make them change a lifestyle, but, as I said, there's an, an organization where people make decisions, but we need to be compassionate and we need to understand that, okay, you've made this decision where you're not gonna agree with the bond or you don't want to have the school structured in a certain way. You disagree with some curriculum, because I know sex, sex education is a really sensitive topic, which I understand. But we can't just say, you're wrong, I'm right, vice versa. We have to come and say, okay, let's work together, let's understand where your concerns are and let's be very explicit, let's lay out, this is what the curriculum looks like. Please come in and talk to your teachers, please look at the curriculum, here's a copy, you can run, run through it, you can see what they're discussing. And then also, please trust our teachers that they're gonna do what's best for their students. I know there's been some criticism of wit and wisdom since we were talking about that, where teachers have called the families or sent emails and said, hey, I'm reading through the curriculum, I don't know if this story or this subject is gonna be appropriate for these kids. Those teachers being proactive, that's amazing and we need to do that as school board members and community members rather than just being aggressive and defensive.
Alright, thank you. Great answers to both of those questions.
What do you think are some of the biggest challenges or obstacles facing the school district? And, and probably on this, the most important part is, how do you think you can help face those challenges?
Gotcha. First and foremost for any board, and so I'm kind of talking a little bit more globally here, is, is the, the the, the academic and the learning of, of all of our kids. We, we, we need to make sure that we're providing the very best for the kids for their future. For some, that is college-bound, but let's not get lost with that. There, there are, we, we need to make sure that kids are ready, ready for work, soon as they leave high school, they graduate and they're out there in the workforce. Apprenticeship programs, we, we live in an area that has incredible, we, I know that the district has partnered with the Boeing Company with, with the shipyard among other companies in, in, in our area that support that. We need to continue to seek those opportunities and experiences for kids. It's not just college-bound, it's academics, it's, we need, we need people in the trades, we need people being able to be flexible between those types of things. And so that's always first and foremost is achievement, learning by kids. Now, now I'll get a little more specific within South Kitsap, I mentioned it in an earlier response, in that we've got to rebuild and build upon trust. Our community, I believe, is looking for leadership. I believe that through my experiences and whatnot, I can help with that. I'm not, I'm not the answer, I'm not the savior for all this. I need to be able to work with four other board members and through my experience, I've been able to do that. We've gotta build up the trust back up there so that the community, the parents, the students, the businesses understand that we're on one page and we're all working together and we're working collectively and we need their support and, and things. Within that, again, I answered a facilities question just a minute ago as well. That's, that's, that's a real challenge. We, we have significant, significantly outdated science labs and things. I know that there's been some things with some of the, the, the short, shorter bonds and building and remodeling some of the science labs at the high- And remodeling some of the science labs at the high school. We need to continue to do those in the middle school and also provide opportunities at the, at the uh elementary level. When I was a principal at South Colby, um we were the leader in working towards STEM within the elementary schools. A lot of different schools are doing different, different things with, within STEM. Um, you know, that's uh science, technology, engineering and math. Sorry to use the acronym. Um so I need to make sure I spell that out and so that people know that. We have got to be able to look at programs like that. What can we provide for kids? And, and, and opportunities there. Um. You know, I'll, I'll stop there because I could go on with some other things, but I've, I've sort of responded to some of that and some of my, some of the other questions.
Totally. Okay. Um now I'm gonna shift gears a little bit since we are the South Kids App Chamber of Commerce and I wanna, I wanna ask you a, a question that focuses on the businesses. And um, you know, what impact or influence do you think the South Kids App School District has on local businesses here in South Kids App?
It's immeasurable. Uh if I was truly like, I cannot send my kids to the school district. They're not. Working out. I don't feel they're giving my kids the right education. I would move. I would find a district where I think they're really good. If it was somewhere that we could economically move to, that we could find work, I would move them out of the district or I would send them to a different district. That is kind of a drastic move, but my kid's future is the most important thing to me, more important than anything else. Part of the reason we moved back here is so they could have the family support and we could be in a district that we liked. We liked living here. We liked growing up here. We recognized the, the faults that it has and some weaknesses, but we all also recognize the strength. And the programs that it had that were strong and that were turning out good human beings, good adults that were ready to go out into their lives and make a difference. The stronger we can build our schools and our students and the students that are graduating out of our schools. And the stronger we can build our community, the more they'll stay. The more they'll stay here and raise families, the more they'll spend money here, start businesses here. The more they'll work here. My husband has been a teacher for, oh, I wanna say ten years now. And we cannot go into a single building in Kitsap County without him going, oh, hey, I had their, her in sixth grade music. Or I had this person in eighth grade or whatever. I had their sister. They stay around. They work here. They come back to their families. They raise families here. And that is just building our community and growing not only our commerce, but also the, the, the value that we have. In our city and in our area.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. Um last question.
And then uh I guess the, the last major question I have for you is, um what impact or influence do you think the school district has? On the local businesses in South Kids App?
Um I, 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 I think a huge impact. Um uh community is just that. It's, it's, it's people and organizations. Working collectively together. Um the community, the businesses need to s- need. We need their help and input of saying, this is the type of employee. Um in the, that we need. Um and, and maybe, you know, not all kids are gonna stay in Port Orchard and go to work and school and, and continue on and live their life. Some do, some don't. But we can get the ideas from the different diversities of businesses, their leaders, their experts in their field. We need to use that expertise and so that we're shaping and we're making sure that we're providing opportunities for our students to be able to contribute. Whether it's here in South Kids App, Bramerton, Silverdale, Tacoma, London. You know, wherever um throughout the world, that they, that they are prepared. And we get that by talking to people, by sharing ideas. By collaborating together. It's, it's, it's critical. We, we have to be a team. We have to be a partnership.
Alright, thank you. So now.
Last question. Last question of the day. Um and this is the one where I tell people, it's, it's, this, this is your chance to, to blow your own horn. And, and tell us why you're great. I know that you did, you did a great job in your background and, and uh, but. This, this question here is, why are you the best choice for the South Kids App School Board in District Three?
Well, I feel that I'm the best because I'm gonna bring an outside view. I know that I don't have experience on the school board. I've never been employed by a school district. It was an option in my original degree to do an education degree and I said, no, thank you, not for me. Which is kind of ironic because now I spend a lot of my time teaching adult learners, different things about medications, other nurses, that sort of thing. So it kind of came back and got me. Um I am a young mother, relatively. We've already established the creaky knees. Um but I have kids in the system. I'm a working mom. I am in the problem that's happening right now. And what happens, the decisions by the school district. Directly affect me. When the school buses are an hour late because we don't have bus drivers, that affects me and how I can get my kids off to school. That's a problem I want to see fixed immediately. When we don't have school nurses, when the curriculum changes, when we have testing issues. That's also that directly affects me and my family and my friends who have kids in the school district. I value the input from people who have longer life experiences and who have been in the district and have that experience. But they can become really blindsided. No, let's not worry about it. I'm looking for blinkers, really blinkered on what they think needs to happen. Rather than having somebody who's gonna bring new creative solutions. Um I'm in an industry that is all about efficiency. All about delivering care for the least amount of cost with the least amount of staff. That's not always the best way to do it. But I recognize that we have to say, okay, we're overstaffed here. We can't afford these resources. We need to do some adjustments and be flexible. That's something I deal with every day. So bringing that business background into it. Even though I don't deal with the running of the hospital, I do touch the business and the economic part of it all the time when I'm looking for resources. When I'm seeking extra staff to come help because of the acuity of the patients. So having that background in there is gonna help make decisions with the limited resources we have. Because the answer is not always, let's ask for a levy, let's get more money. Sometimes the answer is, well, we have to make cuts. We have to adjust where the money goes. Let's talk with the union about their benefits and their salaries. That's all stuff that mixes in and becomes, can become contentious. But needs to be aware for everybody. Um I also am. Willing and able to mediate. I'm a good facilitator in uh conflict resolution. And getting inter- interdisciplinary teams to work together and to talk together. And I don't mind stating my mind and being very blunt and saying, no, this is unacceptable. This is what I think. I am definitely not somebody who's easily intimidated because where I work, there is a lot of people who. Patients and sometimes unfortunately staff who are very aggressive and they want to intimidate me and that's not gonna happen. I'm not the least bit worried about that. So I have no trouble being in a more heated discussion and standing my ground and saying, no. This is inappropriate. We need to shelve this for now. We need to behave like professionals. Um also, I love living in this area. I love my house. I love my community. I have friends here and I wanna stay here. I'm gonna be here for the long term. I don't plan on moving anywhere. My husband is happy at his job and we want to give back to the community. I wanna make this place great. Eventually, if we do move on, I wanna know that where I lived, I made a difference in that not only in people's health. But also in the lives of their children and in the lives of the community.
Thank you. So now, this is the last question. Um. And it's, it's, it's actually, it's not even really a question, but this is your opportunity to blow your own horn, so to speak. And uh, you know, you talked early on about your credentials and, and um. Uh why you think you're qualified to be a, a, a board member for the South Kids App School District? So the final question is, why do you think you are the best choice for the South Kids App School Board?
I believe I'm the best choice for seat three uh S- South Kids App School Board um because of my experience. Uh my time in the district, time living here in South Kids App. I've lived here for over thirty-three years. Worked um for thirty in, in South Kids App. I know the inner workings. Um I know some people might say, well, okay, as an insider, but they don't know me. They don't know how I work and work with people. And the, I'm a independent thinker and I listen. To understand. And I think that's a critical difference from just listening. I listen to understand. Um I've had a variety of leadership roles. Um I've kind of explained those and others, so I won't worry those again. But um so not just involvement in boards, but in, in leadership within those different boards. There is no other candidate, no other current board member that has the, that experience, thirty-eight years in public education. The different variety of boards and leadership, shift roles. I don't believe that the entire board should be made up of educators. I don't think that would be good. We need to diverse and different, different perspectives. Um I'm the only one that can provide that kind of experience and that kind of leadership um, you know, to, to the district. My collaborative skills, getting along with people, I, I seek out people that have different opinions than, than I do. And so I think the board is gonna have, provide me that opportunity to hear that, which is good, because you make better decisions when you hear from, I was gonna say both sides. But a lot of times, there's more than, there's more than one side. There's different perspectives. I do that. Um I know firsthand. The type of leadership that's needed from the, from the board. The board shouldn't be micromanaging. The board should come in and be, provide the direction, the policies, um the support as needed. Um and work with the superintendent. He or she is the only employee that we would have that kind of, you know, relationship with. And we see that our goals and direction and that of the communities are met. I understand that. I have the pulse of the community, have the pulse of the district. And there's nobody else that has that. And I'm proud of that.
So Brian, I, I wanna thank you. I wanna thank Anna for, for participating. And um, you know, this is, it's great race. And I think both of you have a, a, bring a lot to the table. So I wanna thank you guys for stepping up and participating in. In, in this process, um altogether. So thank you, Brian. Thanks for joining me today.
Thanks for the opportunity. I really appreciate it.